He's probably well too. More and more.
Thanks for coming in. Chris Cock. How are you, Brad?
Man, we're good from that field over there. It's a great meeting. A meeting of deals.
Well, this is a nice happy bar.
He must have enjoyed those Oreos.
We'd have to stay after.
And they were, they were flavorful.
It's not really light, though. Light, did it? Sorry. Said me, I'm not going to talk to both. Yeah.
All right. Well, thanks, everybody, for coming in today. Know that most of you had the day off, so we really appreciate you making time for our boarding ceremony tonight, so with that, we'll raise and start.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to approve the regular minutes dated January 21st as presented.
It's been moved by Mary's Court by Heat to approve the regular minutes as presented. Is there any discussion, guys? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Treasure report.
General fund bills to be paid for Jan- February 2019 at fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-five cents. Food service bills to be paid for February 2019 at three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. Two of eighteen capital projects to be paid for February 2019 at sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. And payroll slash library food service general fund will be seventeen thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and two cents. I move that's up as a report as presented.
Been moved by Heat's Boardman Matt to approve the treasure report as presented. Are there any questions, guys? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passed.
I move to approve the consent agenda with the addition of oath of office under personnel number three. Support?
Been moved by Mary, supported by Dana, to accept the consent agenda with the addition of oath of office under personnel number three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Public participation, Mary, do you have anything?
I have no cards.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay.
With that, we'll move on to G, Anchored to Excellent. You want to take that, Brad?
Yeah, I'd love to. I'll read here what we have, and then we can chat a bit. Cannot be overstated how fortunate we are to have a grant writer like Kathy Dickens working for the benefit of Laker schools and students. With our most recent grant award of one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from the state's MySTEM program, Mrs. Dickens has been responsible for well over one million dollars in new grant money just this year. This is in addition to the outstanding job that she does in her daily roles as elementary principal. So for her exceptional efforts and abilities, we'd like to recognize Kathy again this month with the Anchored to Excellence Award. I didn't let Mrs. Dickens know, because I like surprises. And, and I think that it's, it goes without saying, I hope that we appreciate you a lot, but we need to say it sometimes, too. And what you've, what you've done, I mean, outside of Laker circles where we take you for granted, is amazing and applauded by everyone that we meet. And as if right on cue, today, she sent me notice of one more grant award yet, and that was a smaller grant from University of Michigan for the creation of a space exploration class at our junior high. I don't know if we'll be able to pull that off, but if we can, there's a little money to do something like that as well. Just one more of many, many things that Mrs. Dickens has her eye on, always trying to make our school and our, our students better. I'd open the floor for any other comments. I know we all appreciate Kathy a lot.
Which is very much appreciated, and it's talked about in the community. Very good.
Definitely a big thank you. I mean, you helped us in so many ways with the grants, and being a leader in the elementary, you can't say enough good things, and be happy with the way you support us.
Thanks for being an asset to this district.
Anything you'd like to say about some of the, the most recent grants, or anything you might be working on, or anything like that?
Oh, I always have my eye on some things. I keep my ear to the ground and listen to you, the board, and listen to the fellow administrators, Mr. Caddan, whatever you say is kind of a need or a want, it's always what I'm looking for, so. There's a USDA grant out there, or Ross DLP, I'm kind of looking for. Sounds like a sandwich, but it's not.
Not only has she raised money for us this year, but that, that million dollar figure is probably closer to one point two, one point three million by now. That would include some funding for some other schools that have partnered with us on some grants, Clean Diesel Busing, and...
The Department of Justice.
The Department of Justice, which brought the Garrages in to provide safety training for other districts in our county as well. So, not only our kids, but lots of kids are benefiting from your work, so. We have a simple certificate here, we'd like to shake your hand if you'd like to come forward.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Brad, so much.
Thanks, Kathy, appreciate you.
She's bringing her treats tomorrow.
Kathy will be baking the rest of the night. Really nice of you. Okay. Under the next item, as friend of youth, item H, you want to take that?
Yeah, after collecting nominations from the group here, it was determined that Lyle Gasho would be the nominee of choice to represent us. There were three, at least three, good names given, and we put those out for the board's approval. Lyle just does a lot around this community and has for quite some time, purely on a voluntary basis, puts in endless amounts of time, effort, expertise, and, and a lot of his own funds as well, especially to help kids in our archery program, but he's come into the elementary and done little workshops, other places in the community, summer programs, all kinds of things, just to help kids. And it was my pleasure to call him and ask him if he would accept this nomination, and he was extremely humbled, a little emotional at the fact that we would think of him that way. So he will, he and his wife, Jeanne, will represent Lakers as friend of the youth at the thumb meet of champs on May 28th. Will be part of the parade of champions and the opening ceremonies there. Hopefully, we can get a couple of score representatives to go and support them, and hopefully have some kids in that meet, too. Thank you for your thoughts on that, board.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the two thousand nineteen board committees. I'll talk with some of you guys and we've been discussing about where we could make the most strides as a team in each of the committees. This is what I came up with and ran it through Brian. Got any questions or comments? Feel free to either bring them out now or give me a call on it. Like I said, I think that we've done a good job on placing every member in a, in a position where we can be the most successful.
In the next section there on personnel, I'll turn that over real quickly to Mr. Berberg, who can just reiterate here what's, what's on tap for spring sports.
So, spring sports is right around the corner, coming up fast, so as listed, those are our returning coaches from last year, and J. J. Deubs is our JV baseball coach, returning back again this season, so we need a recommendation to hire.
So are you looking to replace yourself, though?
A whole bit. I, I...
Beership, you live in the weekend, isn't it? Don't just learn what that little word was, and make sure that we're on the same page.
If we're on the same page.
So we look for a, a motion to approve the whole slate of coaches as presented, unless there are concerns or questions about individual coaches, then we can break these out and take them one at a time. That's kind of the way it works. If you're okay with the slate and with allowing Mr. Berberg to continue pursuing a couple of blank spots, then we'll take a motion to that effect.
I move to approve the list of spring coaches as presented.
It's been moved by Heat, supported by Matt, to approve the list of spring coaches as presented. Is there any discussion, guys? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Thank you, Steve.
On to number two. Last month, you approved the creation, posting, and hiring of an innovation center director with the new innovation center facility that we've got coming through our bond proposal, bond project this summer, and that'll open up this fall. And as we've talked with our tech teachers, our administration, community, through this whole process, it's become clear that we're probably a person short in meeting the goals that we would have for that new facility. We're also aware you only get one chance to make a first impression, and we really want this, this facility and the programs in it to, to take off and make a nice splash for our kids this fall. And so we have written and now posted a position for, we're calling it a STEM Facilities Director. And STEM courses, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And if you have a focus on that facility there, where STEM education will take place. Also have an eye on higher level operations around campus, so they were to relate to STEM operations and instruction. And so we're looking for a highly skilled person with experience in that field that would either have some certification in career and technical education, or be willing to pursue that based on their past work experience. That's, that's not difficult to obtain, and we would like to see that happen, so that we could get more directly involved with instruction eventually, he or she, and, and also capture some of those added value funds that are available through the government for those kind of programs.
Brian, is it a full-time position?
It'd be a full-time position, maybe split in a couple of different ways this fall, with some of those, like I said, some campus operations, and then mostly the innovation center as responsibilities. I sent a copy of that posting to you, it's on our school website and Facebook page now, if you'd like to take another look.
What is your goal for having the deadline for application?
The deadline for application is April 1st, and our goal for hiring would be within the month after that, and so by, by early May, we'd like to have this person in place so that they can start observing and participating in the construction project as it unfolds, particularly in the innovation center, and be an active part of our planning, operation, setup, all of those things. Start building relationships with industry through the summer and into ground running this fall. So it's a big step, it's a, it's a step of faith, this is a new position, and there's no money tree to pull these funds from, but Mike has done a great job managing funds in the, in the district, and we feel like we've got a little bit of room to expand, and we're going to try to do that.
I thought I wrote July for this position.
They'll begin, that'll be the beginning of the contract, the official contract for next year, yeah. So you've already approved this, I just wanted to bring that to you by, as a point of update and information. And thank you for your support on that. And number three is the piece that we added. We need to get Dr. Scadden up here to do his official oath of office. We have Mike, who's our notary public there, who will witness the signing, and Paul, welcome. Unable to make the January meeting because of some prior commitments, but we welcome you officially now to the board, and if you would please sign here as your acceptance of office. Thank you, and welcome to board.
Thank you.
Now, under the next item K, which is the bonds, something from the proposed update. Anyone want to talk about this?
Yeah. Because of weather issues, which have shut down schools in the area for quite some time now, we've had a couple more delays in our bond, our bid opening schedule. They were, they were going to run a split opening with some of the categories being open last Tuesday and the rest tomorrow, the nineteenth. Because of the weather, they pushed all categories to tomorrow, so, weather permitting and as we've seen, we should have all bid categories opened tomorrow afternoon at two-thirty. I have all those in my office, and it's sizable file, which is good. Got lots of, lots of good bids, and I'm sure some will walk in the door tomorrow as people come in person to witness the opening. If you want to be part of that, feel free to come out, it's kind of an interesting process. After that time, we'll, we'll take advisement from our general manager, Chip Hendrick, and we'll go through and start making decisions on these things. They don't have to be made immediately, but we need to open them in public in the presence of the bidders who are present, and no longer is it required or necessary to, to choose the low bidder, we just need to have justification for choosing the bidder that we prefer.
Where are you doing that at?
It'll be done in the new dining edition in the high school dining area. Our last update from Chip was that he's very pleased with the quality of the bidders that are coming to the table, so we're excited. Any questions or other thoughts on the building project?
Next up is administrator time. Mr. Berberg, do you have anything else to add?
We have, we have a crazy, crazy week this week with coming home, so I'll, and talk about that, but we have a lot of events going on this week. We're recognizing our 2018 football team on Wednesday for their academic all-state award, so we're going to do that during the basketball game on Wednesday. Love to see you there. We're going to recognize our 1979 state runner-up team on Friday, and before the varsity game for the coming home game. And we're also having Parents Night Thursday night and Friday night for, for our boys and girls basketball team. We have four, I don't know if I brought this up, we have four that are going on to the powerlifting state championships in March, so really excited for, for our young people there. Districts will start next week for boys, and then the week after for girls, so those will be at Cat City, so we have a lot, just a busy, busy time. And then on Friday, during Pride Assembly, we have some, some of our athletes that are going to be signing their national letters of the tank to play college sports, so that'll be on Friday during Pride Assembly. Would love to see everybody there.
What time is Pride?
Eight AM.
That'll be legit.
No, it'll be in auditorium. Eight AM.
Anything else to add to that?
I know you do.
Anything else, Steve?
Nothing.
Scott?
Yeah. I just want to highlight a couple of things here on the report. The first is we're going to go on the 28th to Alpina, and I want to offer an invitation to anybody that would like to go. Alpina's, Brian actually just found out they're a new tech school. They just opened a state-of-the-art electronics lab, so we're going to go down and see, there's a lot of ideas there that we've just seen from video that we'd like to add to ours. So if anybody would like to go, we, we're going to have room, so that's this month, the 28th. And then the second thing is, so we've talked a little bit of the Marshall Plan, if you remember, it's a statewide program, lots of money involved with it. The first time around, Tyler actually went down with Brian and I, we went to Croslax, and, and we got into their consortium. We didn't get it the first time around, there's actually a round two, only thirty percent of the money was actually distributed, so we've kind of looked at, we're working with Croslax and some other schools, we've looked at where we maybe were weak compared to what the schools that got it were, and what they did differently, so we've tried to add to that, and if we were to get it, it'd be around five hundred thousand dollars that we could put towards the Innovation Center. So I just want you aware that we're in that process right now, and, and that's it, if you have any questions for me.
Thanks, Scott.
You're welcome.
Mike, do you have anything to add to that?
Just that the budget proposal from the governor is going to be out March 5th, so I'll be watching that closely to see what she has to say about her proposals for education funding for next year. Obviously, that'll be the first step, they'll all go to the House and Senate, they'll put their budgets out, and there'll be a lot of back and forth and negotiating, so be interested in seeing what direction they take, but first step in that process will be March 5th when the governor presents her budget, so.
Big things happening, that's for sure. Mr. Etzel, how are you doing today, sir?
I'm doing okay.
Good.
So I didn't turn a report, I'll actually verbally share something this morning, Todd.
Good. He was excited about that opportunity.
With all the snow days, we are still doing attendance makeup hours at the secondary level, and attendance makeup hours are for these students that has exceeded the limit of ten, and that's grade six through twelve. So if you exceed ten, whatever grade you've earned is an automatic F, unless you do the offered makeup time. So we offer twenty-eight hours, and if you break that down, that actually would afford a student up to fourteen absences in six high school classes, if they make up their time, they can still earn their credit. The fourteen absences is after medical, court, or counseling appointments are waived. So the policy is, I call it workable, it does work with families for, for situations, but it's also pretty liberal, and if someone doesn't take advantage of the makeup time offered, honestly, that, that's on them, because they can earn their credit. We'll have to do one more this next Saturday, since last Thursday, that was canceled because school was canceled. Other things going on, before the rash of snow days, our sophomores got to go to the tech center for the annual tour, they see the different programs over there, and there's also a session on dual enrollment. I will get into classrooms, grade ten and eleven, probably until the end of this week, and talk about dual enrollment and the tech center signup. Dual enrollment, it's a great opportunity. First-year students can earn eighteen credits that transfer very nicely across the state. Second-year students can even earn up to twenty, depending on the courses they take. Any questions?
Do you have a lot of kids that have to make up hours, or no?
Yeah, I think this year, I'm going to say it's around fifty, between fifty and fifty-five was that were offered.
You, you, how do you inform them if they have to make up? I mean, obviously, they would know, but...
Well, no, they, we'd like, they don't know.
They don't know.
So I sit with them right across from me, give them the list of the dates, the hours they have, and I make a copy of that and put it in the mail to their parents. So parent and kid both knows.
Anybody else have anything else for Joe?
All right. Abby, I don't know what you did, you got put at the bottom, though. You got a fellow Mr. Good this time. I think this was a concussion. All right, Mr. Good, you can give up Abby's spiel for her.
Did we want to offer Mrs. Dickens? I don't want Mrs. Dickens to be left out.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped over Mrs. Dickens, too.
I really wasn't going to say anything.
Hey, I apologize completely for that, Mrs. Dickens, if you'd like to give your update now.
No offense, Steve, unless there's any questions, I'll have to record, and I'm done.
All right, I do apologize if you didn't have...
No, it's Mr. Good.
Yeah, no, it's Mr. Good, no stalling.
And I will do my best not to take any of Abby's information here. I just wanted to reiterate and highlight some of the things that I had in my report. We've had a number of groups, despite the snow days, that are going on with their, in the extracurricular realm. Most notably, our theater one-act group this, over the weekend, qualified for state competition in Woodhaven High School, which is down a river, and they did well. They made it to the state competition and performed well, so they were, they were very happy with their performance, and it's a testimony to the director, Mrs. Seagroves, and the fine job that she's done this year taking over the program, so want to give her some accolades. Also, Deb Hasselschwert is doing a phenomenal job with our Science Olympiad kids. They have gone to a couple competitions here recently, and Abby can maybe comment some more on those, so I won't take any more of that information away from her. Also, our FFA kids are doing phenomenally. At districts, they nearly had a clean sweep over at Harbor Beach, there were a few competitions short of a clean sweep, and their regional competition was supposed to be last week on one of those snow days. It is rescheduled for this Wednesday at Delta, so we'll have that going on, and hopefully we get a, some of those kids or a lot of those groups move on to state competition. Looking forward to that, to be represented. And again, speaking of that, too, remember, we have a star farmer applicant, or whatever you call it, potential candidate in Mitchell Richmond, so he will be on the main stage at the Warden Center on Wednesday night, I believe, or at the state, at the state convention anyway. So FFA has some great things going on, too. The last thing I'll mention is First Robotics, Scott Lebsak, whose room we sit in, is in charge of that program, and they are going strong there in the middle of their build. They're looking forward, they have some competitions coming up soon as well, so looking forward for great things from them as well, so. And that's all I have, unless there are any, any questions.
I have one question. You and Mr. Etzel are both good to speak to it. You, you changed some things up for the exam exemption policy for, for this year, and for semester, you increased the grade requirement a little bit and added some attendance requirements. How, how did you feel like that went this first time around?
Well, you, go ahead, you can, I'll give you a first shot.
I think it did have an effect on attendance. I think it affected the high achieving student that before knew that attendance piece wasn't built into exam exemption, and some of our higher achievers played the system. They couldn't play it anymore. So I think the higher achiever, it did improve their attendance.
And was that the goal of the program, was to keep those, those kids in class more, or, I mean, were the goals that you had set out, Matt, do you think?
Yes, yes. I, I think primarily it was attendance, you know, but it was twofold, to raise the bar in terms of academic expectations, so I think, yes, it accomplished both of those, that it gave the, the academic goal was, was higher to, to shoot for, and then attendance, it, you know, caused the students to be mindful of their attendance as well.
So for those who don't know, it used to be that you had to get a B-plus or better in both first and second marking period, or third and fourth, depending on the semester, in order to be exempt from your class's final exam. Now it is an A-minus in both of those marking periods.
Right, right, and so a ninety percent and under five absences that are documented, like our attendance policy doesn't, it doesn't include court dates or doctors, doctor's appointments and things like that.
In addition to the attendance, then, do we feel like it caused some kids that may have been on that line to work a little harder?
To aim higher.
Yeah.
Mr. Good, does anybody else have anything else for him? Mr. Good? Abby?
Well, like Berber said, it should be a busy but fun week. We're finishing up planning the Puck Assembly, which will be Friday afternoon, so. We're finishing up planning the pup assembly, which will be Friday afternoon, so...
What time's the pup assembly? One p.m.
You're going to have the kids in school at all this week, Mr. Good, or?
We're hoping so. Or straight.
It's a fun week for the kids to celebrate, and we're looking forward to all the activities you guys are putting together.
Mr. Carr?
Just by way of official record, I guess, on snow day makeup, I sent a letter out this week, but you saw certainly in most of our parents what we're seeing. We'll have to make up five days as of right now, and that's if we're granted the waiver request for the three. We've got a total of 14 days of no school, and that's 14 or 15, I think, for just about all, if you're at a school, county schools. There are some schools around the state with in excess of 20 days, so I guess we've been lucky if you want to look at it that way. But after the six days of grace and the three days of additional waiver, we would have five days to make up, so it'll stretch our school here from June 7th to June 14th, with exams to be that Thursday and Friday, just like they would have been the week before. I guess another bright spot is that because of our pre-Labor Day start this year, we're really only ending up going to about one way, half, and going to school in past years, so if there's any bright spot, I guess, that's something, and hopefully the snow will stay away for the rest of the spring.
You have to add days, you can't add hours?
Correct. When you get to the point where we're at, with that many days, most of it has to be actual days, you can't tag on two hours per day, or, they used to give you some of those options, but not anymore. There is some discussion out there in Lansing about legislatively creating some more forgiveness. We're not really holding our breath for that, and frankly, I guess we feel like our kids need to be in school anyhow. You seniors, you've got your deadline already, you know, your last day is set, so I know you don't care, but take your time. But yeah, I'll keep you posted as things develop there. And the other thing I just wanted to mention is that we've seen some nice improvements made to our soccer complex. If you haven't had a chance, maybe stop back by in the daylight. Color-wise, it looks about the same as the head, but now it's covered in nice, clean new steel and nicely trimmed, and the inside's been finished out, and that needed just some good maintenance and updating, and we're also adding a little storage building out there for our soccer programs before they kick off the spring, so... That's all I got.
Anybody have any questions for Brian?
One of my 11-year-olds may be promised to ask if we could push the beginning of school back to 8 o'clock, because the present time is hard to really...
Oh, okay.
I'll follow that ask, and...
We'll get it all considered.
I'll let you guess which 11-year-old that was.
Okay. I've had the same conversation with the children at my house, so, all right. Anything else?
I'm with Roger.
For the members for Viking future, all in favor?